Good morning and welcome to the RISIP, uh, Southern County School Board. Uh, please stand for flag leading. Thank you all for being with us today and looking forward to, uh, recognizing some great students. Uh, first we need to approve the agenda, Mr. Russellson. What is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Russellson, superintendent of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to, uh, bring to your attention that, uh, TSI, TSI, CSI information is in your work packet. Uh, also, uh, potential litigation matters. I would like to ask the board to please consider those, uh, in executive session, uh, following our open session today. I appreciate your consideration there. And, uh, before we get started with our, uh, student recognition, which we'll talk about in just a moment, uh, this upcoming Wednesday is Administrative Professionals Day. And, uh, I know Mr. Sullivan always at the beginning of the agenda recognizes Ms. Eldred. And we want to, uh, recognize Glenda Eldred today for all her hard work. And I've got a certificate here. I'd like you to, uh, get a picture, uh, of her and thank her for all of her hard work, hard work of education. Thank. We have several special board meetings throughout the year, but this is one of the very special ones as we start to wind down the school year and we get to, uh, recognize our, uh, top seniors, uh, from each of our schools. We're so excited to have, uh, so many of our seniors here today as they're getting ready for graduation coming up in just a little over a month. Uh, today we are going to be recognizing, uh, from each high school, the valedictorian, the salutatorian, the star student, and the star teacher. Uh, once again, just, uh, an exciting time. We're so happy to be able to, uh, to be able to recognize them for their accomplishments. Uh, before we get started to talk to you about the star student, star teacher program, uh, that's done through the Mississippi Economic Council. And the, uh, star student is the student at each high school who has the highest ACT score in the senior class. And then that student is able to then recognize a teacher who has made a lasting impact on them. It can be a teacher from any part of their educational journey. Now, some of our high schools, uh, you may see will have multiple star students. That means, uh, that they've got multiple students who have a 35 or higher. Uh, because if you have a 35, you're automatically a star student. Even, it doesn't matter if you're the top one or not. If you get to 35 level, you're a star. And so I believe we've got two schools that'll have multiple, uh, star students today. So, uh, at this time, we'd like to get started with this recognition. I'd like to ask Mr. Jason Witt of Center Hill High School to please come forward at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Thank you, school board. Uh, feels like I'm almost there for one of these meetings. Recognizing some outstanding Mustangs. We need to keep that train going. Uh, class of 2025, Center Hill High School, valedictorian, Ms. Ally Catherine Nova-Salem. Class of 25, Center Hill High School, salutatorian, Ms. Katherine Elizabeth Lindville. Class of 2025, Center Hill High School, star student, Ms. Mia Katherine Kingard. And our 2025 star teacher, Ms. Angel Pilcher.
Congratulations. I'd like to ask Mr. Shane Jones from DeSoto Central High School to come forward.
Well, like Mr. Witt said, thanks for having us to honor all of these outstanding students. Our valedictorian this year from DeSoto Central High School is Mr. Jackson Long. Our salutatorian is Ms. Ivy Lynn. Our star student, Mr. Jackson Long. He chose for his star teacher, Ms. Mary Kylie Ruff. Our student, Joaquin Let Zapata. And his star teacher is Ms. Janine Foucault. Our student is Mr. Tristan Brewer. His star teacher is Ms. Terry Bowler. Star student is also Mr. Mason Jones. And he chose for his star teacher, Mr. Brent Embry.
Evening it out at all, yeah?
Um, let's have you step forward and then let them get it out. Look, I know you're putting it up. Okay, that's good, that's.
Yeah. Congratulations. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Dwayne Case from Hernando High School to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Russellson and board members. We're honored to be here this morning to recognize these accomplishments. Uh, this year's valedictorian for Hernando High School is Ms. Riley Whitehead. Our salutatorian this year is Ms. Sophia Hendricks. Our star student with a score of 35 is Ms. Riley Whitehead. She chose as her star teacher, Ms. Emily Sullinger.
Congratulations. This time I'd like to ask Ms. Jana Thompson to please come forward on Lake House.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Russellson and board members for honoring and having our students today. I first want to honor, uh, Ms. June Blakeney of Horn Lake High School, valedictorian. Salutatorian Zoe Christie. Our star student is June Blakeney. And the star teacher is Michael Kenny.
Great, congratulations. I'd ask Dr. Bobby Davis from Lake former high school to please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Russellson and members of the school board for having us, uh, this morning. Uh, for Lake former and high school, our valedictorian is Mr. Andrew Boyd. The salutatorian is Ms. Taylor LaFleur. The star student for this senior class is Mr. Parker Britton. And Parker chose as his star teacher, Mrs. Jamie Young. And unfortunately she couldn't be with us this morning, but she did want me to send along her thanks, uh, for this honor of being recognized this morning.
Congratulations. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Chris Parkins, please come forward, Lewisburg House.
Good morning. Thank you, uh, for having us here today and recognizing these students. The valedictorian from Lewisburg High School, class of 2025, is Ms. Ann Ha. The salutatorian from Lewisburg for 2025 is Kylie Ward. We have two star students, Ms. Ann Ha, Mr. Aiden Smith. They've chosen Ms. Maggie Dennis as a star teacher. And Ms. Tracy Hunter.
Congratulations. This time I'd like to ask Mr. Jacob Striplin to come forward, Olive Branch House.
Good morning, board members. Thanks for having us this morning to recognize these individuals. The valedictorian of the Olive Branch High School, class of 2025, is Ally Dina. The salutatorian, Olive Branch High School, class of 2025, Allison Turner. Our star student this year is Ally Dina. And Ms. Dina chose as her star teacher, William Fry.
Congratulations. I'd like to ask Mr. Adam Sykes from South Haven High School.
I appreciate y'all saving us, uh, for best for last, but I'm gonna, nothing to do with that, but of course. But, uh, no, thank y'all for letting us come and recognize our students. We've had a fantastic year at South Haven High School. So, uh, it is an honor to recognize these, uh, three students. Valedictorian for South Haven High School for 2025 is Cassini Ara.
Salutatorian for South Haven High School for class of 2025 is Wade Zing. Next star student with a score of 36 is Nicholas Gaines. Mr. Gaines selected Sarah Roush as his star teacher this year. Ms. Roush has, um, moved to North Carolina, uh, so, but he still wanted to pick her just for all of her, uh, all that she has done for him throughout his high school career. So it was Sarah Roush.
On behalf of our school board members, I want to congratulate once again, uh, all of our seniors who are here today. Uh, obviously you've done an outstanding job of, uh, representing your school, uh, over these last four years. I want to congratulate our star teachers also, uh, for your influence and all that you've done, uh, to help our students, uh, throughout their educational journeys. Uh, we look forward to seeing our, uh, seniors here in just a few weeks at the Landers Center. We know this is an exciting time and I always tell seniors all the time, uh, don't, don't try to rush this next month or so. Soak it all in because it's gonna go by very, very fast and just enjoy, uh, every moment of it. It's one of those times you'll never forget in your lives. So, once again, we look forward to seeing you graduate. And we are about to get on with the business of the board meeting and you are welcome to stay in here all over if you will too. You're already packing up, so I guess that means y'all want to go. Y'all have a wonderful day. Thank y'all. Once again, it's always exciting to, uh, recognize our seniors and appreciate y'all's participation in that also. And that concludes the superintendent.
Great, thank you. And, uh, wonderful to, uh, celebrate this. Salutatorians actually are star students. Um, there is no attorney for court. Thanks. So we move to go ahead and approve the previous minutes of the eighth, fourth board meeting as well as the April eighth special call board meeting. Uh, do I have a motion to approve that?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. As Mr. Russellson said, before we approve the consent agenda, again, I want to thank all of our administrative staff and salesmen for getting this to us. Um, this consent, consent agenda is A through HHH. Uh, so it takes some time to get that and it gives us plenty of time to go through each of those line items. So thank you again for that. Um, Mr. Russellson, uh, what is your recommendation for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the consent agenda.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. New business, Mr. Williams, building additions for Lewisburg High School.
Yes, sir. CO bids were opened on March the 27th for Lewisburg High School Building Addition Project. Eleven bids were received and it's my recommendation except for lowest and the best bid from Murphy and Sons.
Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve accepting the lowest and best bid from Murphy and Sons for the building addition at Lewisburg High School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons for Lewisburg High School.
Yes, sir. We request permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons Incorporated for the Lewisburg High School Building Addition Project.
Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons for the building addition at Lewisburg High School.
Hearing that motion, uh, hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, bids for lighting replacement project, phase two.
Mr. CO bids were opened on March the 18th for the DCS Lighting Replacement Project Phase Two. Five bids were received. It's my recommendation except for lowest and the best bid from Copperhead Electrical.
Uh, Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve accepting the lowest and best bid from Copperhead Electrical for the lighting replacement project.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, contractual agreement with Copperhead Electrical.
Yes, sir. We request permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Copperhead Electrical Contractors for the DCS Lighting Replacement Project.
Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Copperhead Electrical, uh, for the lighting replacement project.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, bids for a parking lot expansion project in Lewisburg High School.
Yes, sir. CO bids were opened on March the 18th for the Lewisburg High School Parking Lot Expansion Project. Nine bids were received. It's my recommendation except for lowest and the best bid from Murphy and Sons.
Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the bids for the parking lot expansion at Lewisburg High School. Lowest and best bid from Murphy and Sons.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons.
Yes, sir. We request permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons Incorporated, Lewisburg High School Parking Lot Expansion Project.
Mr. Russellson, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Murphy and Sons for the parking lot expansion project at Lewisburg High School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, toilet room renovation project at South Haven Middle School.
Yes, sir. Bids were opened on March the twenty-fifth for South Haven Middle School Restroom Renovation Project. Seven bids were received, and it's my recommendation except for lowest and best bid from Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the lowest and best bid from Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder for the toilet room renovation project at South Haven Middle School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Okay, uh, sorry. Uh, Mr. Williams, contractual agreement with Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder.
Yes, sir. Request permission from the board to enter into a contractual agreement with Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve entering into a contractual agreement with Grinder, Tabor, and Grinder for the toilet room renovation project at South Haven.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, request to reimburse an employee named new high school.
Yes, sir. Your packet is a letter from the principal of Fernando High School giving permission to reimburse the archery team sponsor. She took twenty-six students to the North Hat Competition and paid for their debt.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to reimburse employee at Fernando High School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Mr. Williams, request to reject a bid for the football school for Horn Lake High School.
Yes, sir. Bids were opened on April first for the purchase of a football soccer school for Horn Lake High School. We're requesting that all the bids be rejected due to the cost being over budget amount for the project.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the request to reject the bid of football school for Horn Lake High School.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Good morning, Ms. Hadley. Good morning, how are you all?
Statement of revenue and expenditures for February twenty-twenty-five.
Yes. The revenue collections through February for general funds are at two-hundred-and-fifty-eight million, six-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, two-eighty, which is actually seven percent higher than FY twenty-four revenues at two, two-hundred-and-forty-two million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-nine. The increase is due to the increased valuation of that forum and increased MSFF. Revenues for all funds are at two-hundred-and-ninety-eight million, eight-hundred-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-nine, which is actually seven percent higher than FY twenty-four. General fund expenditures through February were at one-hundred-and-ninety-nine million, ten-one-fifty-one, which is five percent higher than FY twenty-four expenditures. Expenditures for all funds are at two-hundred-and-fifty-two million, four-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, four-hundred-and-nine, which includes construction expenditures, but the overall expenditures compared to FY twenty-four decreased due to depletion of SIR funds.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of revenue and expenditures for February twenty-twenty-five.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. This kindly combined balance sheet for February twenty-twenty-five.
The fund balance for all general funds is at two-hundred-and-forty-million, three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, five-seventy-five, which is up twelve percent over FY twenty-four, which was at two-hundred-and-fifteen million, one-fifty-seven oh-eighty-three. The fund balance will start to move closer to historical values for the FY twenty-five budget as expenditures from SIR will move back to district maintenance.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the combined balance sheet for February twenty-twenty-five.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Ms. Hadley, statement of cash flow for February twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, the February cash balance for district maintenance was at two-hundred-and-twenty-nine million, seven-hundred-and-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-six, which is seventy-nine percent of the cash balance for all the funds, standing at two-hundred-and-eighty-nine million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand, seven-forty-seven. And the amount invested was by Shellna and Regent's Bank at the end of February was fifty-three million, eight-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-five.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the statement of cash flow for February twenty-twenty-five.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. And then the certification of bank reconciliations for February twenty-twenty-five.
Indeed. All banks state this having reconciled with no exceptions.
It's always good to hear.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve the certification of bank reconciliations for February twenty-twenty-five.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Hadley. Ms. Hadley, how are you today? Good. Personnel.
Pages one through five are recommendations. Page six and eight are personnel changes. Page nine is a memo for myself, request to approve a twelve-thousand-dollar supplement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for retired teachers who are returning to full-time employment to help with their teacher shortage. Page ten is a memo from Ms. Seratane Russell, Director of Intervention, request to approve a stipend in the amount of fifteen-hundred dollars annually to all K-12 librarians. This will compensate having a textbook in inventory and technology duties. Page eleven is a memo from Mr. Ryan Kirkland, Chief Accountability Officer, and request to approve forty additional hours for, uh, Ms. Burke at her currently rate of pay. This would begin May twenty-ninth and run through June the thirtieth. She will claim for her deposition as data to instruction specialist, and that would begin on July first. Page twelve is the two-thousand-and-twenty-five, two-thousand-and-twenty-six educator and residence calendar. We have three, uh, from our school that will be assigned, and those school locations will be signed in our district by the MBE. Page thirteen through seventeen is the twenty, two-thousand-and-twenty-five, two-thousand-and-twenty-six child nutrition calendars. Page eighteen is a memo from, um, Ms. Shonda Johnston. She's a librarian at Horn Lake Intermediate School, and it's informing the board of her run for reelection work by Alderman at Horn Lake. But page nineteen through twenty-one is the twenty-five, twenty-six athletic and extracurricular activities supplements. Page twenty-two and twenty-four is the job description for Assistant Superintendent of Accountability and Accreditation. Page twenty-five through twenty-eight is the job description for Director of Assessment and Accountability. Page twenty-nine through thirty-one is the job description for Director of Accreditation and Management Information Systems. Page thirty-two through thirty-four is the job description for Director of Workforce Development. Page thirty-five through thirty-seven is the job description, Director of Skew Records and Graduate Services. Page thirty-eight through forty is the job description for Data to Instruction Specialist. Pages forty-one through forty-four is our job description for JROTC instructors. Page forty-five through forty-six is a quest traditional pay for Mr. Kirkland. Requesting that all third-grade testing coordinators to work up to twenty additional hours at their hourly rate of pay for additional testing duties. This would begin on seven, one-twenty-five, and would run through six-thirty at twenty-six. Pages forty-seven through forty-eight is a quest for additional pay for Mr. Kirkland. This would be for all high school testing coordinators to work up to forty hours at their hourly rate of pay for additional job duties, and this would begin on seven, one-twenty-five, and also end on six-thirty, twenty-six. Pages forty-nine and fifty are requests for additional pay from the Sky Secretary of Special Education on the, on the listed employees that will be working ESY. I just stopped there. Have that approved.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion?
I make that motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes.
Uh, file page, page fifty-one is an employee who's working toward a licensure that would be receiving provisional pay.
Mr. Usleton, what is your recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board to approve personnel as presented.
Hearing that recommendation, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Mr. Coler, do we have any residency issues for executive session?
Yes, sir. We have my husband's expense for executive session.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Finley, do we have any discipline matters for executive session? Motion for consideration of closed session to determine whether the board should enter into executive session for the following matters: student discipline matters, residency appeal matters, and potential litigation matters. Do I have a motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go into closed session. Mr. Channing will come back and inform you whether we stay in executive session. Thank you very much.